Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's meeting of Liverpool City Council's Environment and Climate Change Select Committee. Before I conduct various technical checks, I'll just bring our Chair to say a few comments of welcome and introductions. Chair?
Good evening, everyone. Can I please welcome members, officers and members of the public viewing proceedings online to today's meeting? I will now ask the committee clerk, Mike Jones, to check that members and officers present virtually can see us and hear us.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. And again, as I said, welcome to colleagues joining this evening, both from the council chamber and virtually via various remote locations. In terms of members who are present tonight, we have the Chair, councillor Enes Imic, who is in the town hall with herself. And we then have a number of members who have joined us remotely, so I'll deal with those firstly. So councillor Clark, if you just unmute your microphone and confirm you can see and hear us okay?
Yes, I can see and hear perfectly, thanks, Mike.
That's perfect, that's nice and clear. Councillor Nice, welcome, can you hear us okay?
Hello, Michael, yeah, I can see and hear you everyone clearly, thanks a lot.
That's excellent, thank you, Dorian. Councillor Asmussen, welcome, can you hear us okay?
I'm happy, thanks, Tom.
Perfect, much appreciated. And councillor Crone, can you hear us okay?
Loud and clear, thanks, Mike.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. In terms of the chamber, in addition to the Chair, we also have councillor Chris Brown. Chris, if you'd just like to turn your microphone on briefly.
Hi, you can see and hear me, hopefully.
Thank you, Chris. And last but not least, we have the Cabinet Member, councillor Laura Robertson-Collins, if I can just pass over to her.
Hi, everyone, colleague.
Thank you. Obviously, in addition to the various members at this evening's meeting, we have a number of officers present to support and comment and answer questions from members on the various support items before us. That concludes our technical checks in terms of this evening. And moving on to the items of business, I just need to confirm now in terms of apologies from colleagues, that I have apologies from councillor Lindsay Amelia. Chair, do you have any additional apologies to advise?
No, there is no additional apologies that I have received. Can I just please ask you all who are virtually present to mute your microphones so that we don't have a feed there? And also, when you wish to speak, if you could please use that feature of raise your hand, or even better would be if you could just physically do it, because it's easier for us to see that here. I think, also, Mike, can we please make sure that livestream is working?
Thank you, Chair, I confirm the livestream has been checked and is operating correctly. I believe we also have councillor Joanne Anderson, who's joined us a few minutes later due to slight technical issues. Councillor Anderson, if you can hear us okay, if you'd just like to unmute your microphone to confirm you're here and present correctly.
Yeah, I can hear you okay, the team doesn't work on the city council computer, sorry.
No problem, thank you for joining us, and apologies for the brief delay. And back over to you, please, Chair.
Okay, thank you, so we are going to move on to our items of business. First one is declaration of interests. So can I ask if members have any interests to declare relating to the items of business on this evening's agenda? Okay, thank you, so that's a no. So we are moving on to item number two, which is minutes of our last meeting. Can I please refer you to the pages of 1 to 20 of the agenda pack? And those are the minutes, our last meeting was held on the 3rd of February 2020. Do we have any comments or questions from members, please? If anyone could indicate. Okay, no, so I do have a few comments myself. So just briefly to say that we had Simon O'Brien's presentation there, and some of the issues around the cycle lanes have actually been realised, and so that is a really good thing. But there are some issues that were mentioned in our last meeting, which I think we just need to be aware and to follow that up. One thing that keeps coming up is a cruise liner terminal, and so we will be needing a report eventually on this, so we don't want to forget that. Another thing is hydrogen city motion that's been presented, that needs to be picked up by a relevant task group. In the minutes we say that it will be taken up by a task group, but there is no indication which task group, so that needs to be resolved, please. And then also, we had an issue around fields in trust, to which it says that it will be going to cabinet, and I just wonder if that has happened yet, in terms of this going to cabinet?
Thank you, Chair, just to advise that at this stage, potential recommendations in relation to fields in trust have not progressed to cabinet. Obviously, when the report is at the stage to do so and is prepared, yourself and members of the committee will revise accordingly and have consultation through the normal report preparation processes.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, I will now bring councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just to say really, the motion that you mentioned, I mean, that makes sense, I think that it goes to my committee that I chair. So I don't know whether for the minutes that we can add that to be put for when we set up the next meeting, and I'll be added to that meeting, thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Brown. I'm just, would like to make sure that we follow up these issues that have been mentioned, so those are the three there, thank you. Oh, we have another councillor joining here, it's councillor Coleman. Angela, so hello, Angela. Just to check that we can hear her, okay? Angela, can you please unmute your microphone and say hello?
Hello, hi, yeah, sorry, I had trouble getting on to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are now moving. Can I please ask that the minutes be approved, is that agreed?
Thank you, colleagues, if you just give a brief indication on screen by nodding your head, just for visual recognition and purpose of the record. Thank you, that's excellent, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So we are moving now on to item number three, which is cabinet member updates. These are the pages 21 to 30 of our agenda. Can I now please invite councillor Robertson-Collins to introduce her cabinet member update, copies of which you should have received already? Thank you.
Many thanks for that, Chair, and just to say how nice it is to actually see you and other colleagues in person tonight, and to be able to wave to some other colleagues on the screen there. It's obviously been a very strange and difficult time for everyone. It's been, as you just mentioned with regard to the minutes, a very long time since we last met. It's over six months, although in some ways it actually feels a lot longer. I want to thank particularly all the officers for getting the reports out in time and in good time. I think in all the many years I've been certainly a Chair of committee as well as Cabinet Member, I'm not sure we ever had all the reports out at the right time before, so well done to everyone for that. And hopefully all members have then had time to actually read those reports. I did make an effort to put in as much detail as I could without repeating things that were going to go into the officers' reports. So hopefully, with the two reports combined, my own report and the report that I think is at item five, is it? From the offices about the task groups, hopefully that will make quite a good overview of what has gone on for the last six months. Because, as I say, even though we haven't necessarily been physically meeting or physically in the council, some of us, certainly it's been an extremely busy time for everybody. There's been something of a paradox with the health emergency and its effect on the climate emergency and the work around dealing with that. Some things have been obviously delayed because of real serious problems with staff capacity and so on, and lockdown, and all the issues those brings with it. But as I say, there's a paradox that other things have actually moved ahead, and some awarenesses of some of the issues that relate to climate emergency as well as the health emergency, such as air quality, have actually been very much raised in the public mind. So in some ways, as I say, although some things have been delayed because of just work capacities and so on and other problems, some things like active travel, for example, as I think you mentioned yourself there, Chair, in your introduction, has actually, we've actually had a bit of a surge ahead. We've even had a Tory government that has been talking positively about active travel, which has been good to hear, and actually providing some funding, so we have been able to make some headway with that, which has been good to see. And other things have had a bizarrely beneficial effect, really. Some of the things about people appreciating their own local environment has been really interesting and refreshing to see. People appreciating their own, the parks and the green spaces that are on their doorsteps and in their local areas, not least because nobody was allowed to go anywhere else, so you had to kind of go out and experience those if you were able to leave the house. And not only enjoying the local green areas and benefiting from those and really appreciating those, but benefiting and appreciating other spaces, and I'm talking about in fact people's alleyways. We've had a kind of real upsurge in people going out and planting plants and starting to do communal composting and projects like that in their alleyways, so every little space has been kind of much more appreciated in a way that maybe people didn't have time to do before, when we were all rushing off to work and coming into the city centre. So we've had those kind of strange things going on, and the world has moved on in strange ways. And I tried to draw attention to several of those things in my report. So the climate leads, as I mentioned before, as the officer leads, have all been working extremely hard on the climate agenda and dealing with the attempts to get to zero carbon and so on that we're committed to at the council. So, but they've also, of course, been dealing with, you know, a massive upheaval at the council in terms of all the things we've had to do in the city, including literally taking food to people and all those kind of emergency things that we were all thrown into back in March. So particularly want to thank Colleen Martin, Darren Hardy, Sam Campbell and Chris Loma for all the work that they've done. And say we come on to their report after mine. So on the specifics of my report, I say I hope people have been able to read it. I appreciate that it's difficult to deal with everything on screens and so on. There's been the work on the air quality, you know, we've had that amazing thing where everybody suddenly noticed that the air was cleaner, and that was because there were less cars on the road, and that kind of raised consciousness that that made with everybody, which has been really interesting, even though we're now sort of on a bit of a trajectory back in the wrong direction. And we've also obviously got problems now with promoting public transport in terms of the restrictions on using public transport. But as I say, at least those issues have been raised in the public domain. There are some specific things there that I've mentioned about the city centre. Hanover Street, we've had some good news on. And the active travel, I think people are quite aware of that, in terms of the bike lanes and so on. I've drawn attention to the electric vehicle charging, because we got some funding for that before lockdown. And we've had some beneficial progress with that. So I've put quite a lot of detail in there for members, because quite a lot of members will have EV chargers going into their own wards and in a national consultation that's literally ongoing at the moment. So we've got national funding for that, it's ongoing, so do really want to draw members' attention to that. I'm aware that simply changing over from petrol and diesel cars to electric vehicles isn't, you know, the desired end in terms of that agenda. Obviously, our aim is to have less cars on the road, more people using walking, using cycling, and hopefully being able to go back to public transport. But in terms of the short term, obviously that has to be part of the solution. And in a city like ours, where we've got so many flats and terrace houses, obviously we need to provide some on-streets charging, or people will never be able to get out of that chicken and egg where they can't get an electric vehicle, not only because of the cost, which is still currently prohibitive, but because of the actual availability of the charging. So I do really urge members, I've actually put in an appendix there at the end of my report, with very specifically listed the places that are being consulted on, for members to proactively promote that to their constituents, to actually check those addresses, check that they're happy with them, respond to the consultation, which is online, it's only a five or 10 minutes online survey. But make sure that they draw their residents' attention to those electric vehicle charging points, and ask them if they're happy with them, and make sure they respond, because I think if we're not promoting that, we're never going to get through that kind of, over that hurdle there to start that shift to electric vehicles. And with regards to Clean Air Zone, I will leave Colleen to give some more details on that. That is progressing in a reasonably, it is progressing, shall we say. But I know there've been problems in other cities though, so I'm slightly alarmed by some of the things we've seen in other cities, but as far as we know, we're able to progress with that. I've drawn quite a lot of attention to the work that I've done, and everybody's done, on biodiversity, particularly things around the wildflower planting, the tree planting, the urban greener. I've put quite a lot of detail into that, into the report, and thankfully, despite lockdowns and social distancing and all the rest of that, much of that has been able to progress, because obviously you can go into a field and sow wildflower seeds in a reasonably distant way. So that's quite positive. There's been a lot of publicity just in the last few days, actually, about the ecological crisis and the biodiversity crisis. I do remember when I was still at primary school, I think, David Attenborough talking about this stuff, which probably was the first thing that converted me to that agenda. David Attenborough is still talking about that stuff, and the really serious, you know, issues with biodiversity and populations sort of being absolutely devastated. So I just want to draw people's attention to that. Obviously, that's not just in the council's gift to resolve, but I have also attached to my report a couple of motions that I've asked to go to full council. I've not put them into this committee, I've asked for them to go to full council. I very much hope they were agreed by all parties, both to thank people for their involvement with the wildflower meadows in particular. We've now got at least 25 wildflower meadows that I know of and I've been involved with, and we actually planted three more yesterday. So I want to thank colleagues from U Tree Ward and Notty Ash Ward for their work there. They were out planting yesterday, well done to them. And the other cross-party motion that I would hope would be agreed cross-party is about supporting hedgehogs and being a hedgehog-friendly city, and the work we can do around that locally and as a city. So those motions are attached for people's information. And getting people to sign up as hedgehog champions individually. Again, if members could promote that with their residents, that would be really, really much appreciated. The other issue that I've dealt with particularly in my report is the issue of waste reduction. It's another one of my personal priorities. Something that I've been able to go out and do in my ward, with my ward colleague, is actually get some communal composters into some alleyways, and where people have wanted to green their alleys, and we've been supporting them financially with, giving them funding for planters and plants and so on. We've kind of demanded a bit of a payback on that, saying we have a communal composter to try and reduce waste as well. And I'm really pleased that certainly in the LA team part of my ward, we've had quite a bit of progress with that. So anyone wants support or help on that, and I'd try some, more than happy to give it. Next week is recycle week. Obviously, we'd rather people weren't producing waste in the first place, but if it is being produced, and it's not being composted or reused, then it needs to be recycled. So there'll be lots of messages going out to the city council's comms team. Again, ask members to join in with that, to promote that, to be tweeting things, to be going out and getting their residents to, if they can't not produce waste, then please at least recycle it, use the blue bins correctly and all those things. And the path to zero carbon, we have had progress on that despite lockdown. Again, Colleen will be speaking more about that. We've actually engaged the people now that are going to be writing our plan for reaching zero carbon, which is obviously the aim that we've all signed up to. So we will be hearing more about that and be more involved in that as a committee. I've had an introductory meeting with those guys. They seem to know what they're talking about, we'll find out soon. So as I say, the officer leads will speak more about some of those detailed things, and just to thank everyone for their support.
Thank you very much, Laura, for your report, and especially, I'd like to commend it in terms of active transport transformation, and of course, all the work on biodiversity. And particularly as well, that we are starting this path to zero carbon, and that there is going to be an action plan, and this is something we really need to push on, definitely. But before I say anything else, I'd like to ask committee members and councillors present if you have any questions, please, if you could indicate. Alison Clark, please, councillor Alison Clark, please.
And so, Laura, just in terms of the walking to school campaign, one of the things that's hampered that within my own ward is the fact that we've had a lack of a school crossing patrol officer. And I know this is a general problem throughout the city. So although a lot of children were walking to school, and I'm thinking particularly of Notty Ash Primary School, that's been reduced because of the problem, you know, and kids not feeling safe, their parents and feeling that they're not safe crossing the road in Notty Ash. So I just wondered what the position was, if you knew, regarding school crossing patrol officers at the moment, please?
Thanks for that question. I do know something about it, and it's unfortunate to an extent, I do. The reason I do is because we've been dealing with this perennially, all the years I've been a councillor, I've been dealing with it as a local councillor, I've been dealing with it as Cabinet Member. And it's an ongoing issue, particularly annoying as the council, we have always politically committed to providing the funding for those posts. Those posts are there, those posts have not been cut, those posts are available to be recruited to. But you're dealing obviously with a job that's very hard to fill, it's very odd hours, but you have to have a lot of commitment to go and do it. And they probably tend to be done by older people and so on, who may be affected at the moment by the health emergency. So we've got particular problems, they may be people who are shielding and so on. What, if you, I'm not sure what school you're speaking about particularly, obviously I'll take up the school that you're speaking about particularly. But we do need to check that those jobs are going through as recruitment, that they're not subject to the recruitment freeze, if they're vacant, if there's awkward sickness, that we've got some form of cover, that we look at them much more flexibly in terms of job sharing. We've offered schools the finance to provide the job and the training, and they train up several people who are able to do that job, so therefore they've got that flexibility. I understand why schools are reluctant to take on more of the responsibility for the organisation, despite the fact that we've committed to the funding, because it's another thing that schools have got to worry about. But schools do need to be directly involved with that, because it's very difficult for us to deal with it unless they're sort of very responsible on the ground at school, and they don't just kind of blame us again. So they are posts that are available. I'll look at the one that you're talking about particularly. We were dealing with another one very recently, the councillor Thomas had drawn to our attention, and we have made plans for trying to make sure that there's a job share, two people are interested in that, and that they can be recruited to that. But any issues with any school crossing patrol, let myself or councillor Connor know, or councillor Thomas or councillor Murray, because the four of us together are working, as you know, on that Walk to School project, and we will make sure that something happens to resolve it, because you're right, it's not acceptable. The money's there, and we've got to get people into those posts in some way.
Thank you, Laura. We have two councillors to bring in, so councillor Tom Crone, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Laura, for your report. It's good to be in this committee discussing all these issues that are obviously very close to my heart, so that's really interesting. However, I do feel that there's signs in your report, Laura, that we're, excuse me, still in danger of tinkering around the edges of this huge problem, and we, you know, I still feel like we might need to be bolder, have a much more sort of like bold, confident approach about what we can achieve. So just a couple of examples, for example, the section where you talk about the electric charging points, I'll quote directly, it says, "We have to work towards less vehicles. However, there are little indication of this being a reality in the short term." Now, that's, it's a bit of a shame to hear us kind of throwing our hands up and saying that we can't do anything, especially seeing as highways is one of the areas of the council that we've got the most control. We really can take decisions and make things change within the area of highway. So I hope we can, you know, change our attitude and start setting some targets for traffic reduction and thinking about a plan, how we can go about achieving that in the short term. Another thing which was, which is a bit of a shame, is the bus gate issue. Obviously, it's three years now since the 82 route was changed, and one of the reasons for that was because Hanover, Hanover Street was so congested. Three years on, we've finally got a plan for a bus gate, it's not yet been installed, obviously, but from what I've seen, it's only one way, it's still going to allow taxis and private hire. So it's actually questionable whether the solution we put in place is going to be adequate to, you know, clear that road ready for buses to start using it again. And final point I'd like to raise is just on the issue of wildflowers. I welcome all the wildflower meadows that have been planted, I think they're a really good development. However, I really noticed during lockdown, when the mowing schedule was suspended because of the lockdown, that actually nature grows back by itself, and our verges became rich with flowers, abundant with biodiversity. So rather than sort of selecting places and spending money and effort planting up wildflower, or as well as doing that, could we have a full review of how we mow all the green spaces within the city and identify as much space as possible, which we can just allow to be managed naturally for biodiversity?
Thank you, councillor Crone, and welcome to this committee. Just to be clear, we at this committee, and me as Cabinet Member, have been talking about these issues since I was appointed in July last year. You're new to the committee, and I'm welcome to see you. I don't know what's happened to my ward colleague councillor Brown, but hopefully you've come to some amicable arrangement to swap over there. So welcome to the committee, we are certainly working on these issues. There's, obviously there's no issue in terms of me tinkering around the edges, but we're working in a climate where we've had very restricted things that we can do in terms of funding. We've had 10 years of austerity, and we've now got a health emergency and staff op sick and all the other things that obviously restrict and slow things down. So I have sympathy with some of what you're saying, but you're aware of the situation that we're currently working in. With regards to electric vehicles, my report very specifically says, I don't suggest that that is the answer, but that it is a short-term measure to support some of that transition. In regard to highways, you also know that I'm not operationally responsible for highways. That sits in Regeneration Committee, which is the committee that you've been on for years, so there are some issues there. I draw some attention to those issues, quite frankly, in my report, to be honest, and that's their battles that have been ongoing since I've been appointed. The Hanover Street gate, bus gate, was agreed at Cabinet in April 2018, so yeah, two and a half years ago. And I very specifically say that, you know, that should have been resolved before now, but it has been now, which is good. The issue with the 82, I appreciate that's been a problem, and that the 82 should be coming back, but a lot of other bus routes were threatened as well, and we've resolved that, so hopefully that is resolved now. So thanks to everyone that's been involved with that, and my colleague, my Cabinet colleague, who is responsible for highways there, thanks to her for that, councillor Connor. With regard to the, we used my cutting of verges, were you, so? Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I was suggesting that if we review our mowing schedules and try and manage all green spaces to sort of benefit biodiversity, we could get huge biodiversity gains by doing that.
I completely agree with you, Tom. And what I have been saying to residents or councils as I've raised issues about specific issues is that that's how we need to deal with it, we need to change those contracts. So if there is an area that you think shouldn't be being cut, that is being cut, then let us know as Cabinet Members, and we'll make sure that that's looked at. I don't think we can just say we're not going to cut anything, because clearly there's safety issues and all sorts of things, and neither can we say that we will cut everything. So as we, as we want to make changes, what I'm asking members to do in particular, but also residents to come and choose, be specific about the area that you want changed, and we can look at putting that into the contract. Again, it sits operationally with my Cabinet colleague councillor Connor, but obviously I'll work with her on that. I have much sympathy with what you're saying, but we can't just say we're going to stop cutting everything. We need to be a bit more specific, so send sites, send areas, but be specific about them.
Thank you very much, councillor Crone, and thank you very much, Laura, for the response. Now I will bring in councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Laura, for the report, and thank you for taking the time to put together a lengthy report. Just a couple of issues, the walking to school campaign, obviously something I support. I think every one of us have got some issues in terms of congestion and parking around their schools. I just feel like we've missed a little bit of a trick with this going through the certain, the harder part of the lockdown period in terms of getting out the survey, which, you know, which looks good, and I'll promote that to the schools within my ward. One particular school in my ward has wanted to do this as a thing already. Have there been other schools across the city who've already wanted to do this in the meantime, before the surveys went, gone out? And have they, and what's been the kind of process with that in terms of trying to get that sorted for them before they reopen their school? And how quickly, if schools respond to this survey, how quickly can we get this turned around in those areas that we that that want to take part in this? And just lastly, Chair, I'm bringing a motion to full council on pavement parking. And the government is obviously doing a consultation on pavement parking. I want that motion to be as nonpartisan as possible, and everybody to try and have a feed into that the best way they can. Do you have any thoughts on that in your environmental climate change hat? And yeah, really, your thoughts on that.
Thanks, Chris. So with the walking school campaign, just to clarify, all schools have been spoken to, all schools have been surveyed. The reference to the survey was the minute for the previous meeting, which I'd brought in February. So we have the so the the report from this September that that I was speaking to just now. Every single school, every single school was contacted in May, June, July. And as I say, I've been working since I was appointed with my three other war cabinet colleagues, Sharon Connaught, Barbara Murray, and Pam Thomas. And we've worked as a working group with highways. But it's certainly once we have the lockdown, and we could see, you're absolutely right, we could see that, you know, people are going to start going back to school, children are going to start going back to school, potentially parents are still off work, and you have those kind of opportunities to change those habits. So we were absolutely determined to try to try and cut in and and get in there first. So every single school was spoken to over that summer time very directly. We and I thank the officers there, particularly Jane Black and Rossaloves, who literally went out to speak to those schools. So every school has had their views taken on board, whether what they wanted could be delivered. And some schools weren't asking for the things that we wanted. We've had a school that's banned cycling. We've had a school that's, you know, wanted to increase, you know, traffic and flow and all these kind of things. We're kind of going, no, you know, we want to help you, but it's got to got to go the right way in terms of long term aims as well as short term aims. The need for social distancing was obviously an urgent thing that we needed to hang it on. We were trying to get some pilot roads closed, because then you could walk in the walk in the roads, and you could walk safely, but have the have the distancing. So that was what we were aiming for. We did get a couple of pilot closures. It's not been as comprehensive as I would have wanted. But there's no way that that project has ended. And just to clarify, when parents are saying now, you know, there's people parked on the pavement, there's people all around the school gate. They're not random people who've kind of beamed down from Mars and appeared in front of the school. They are other parents from the same school. It's not, you know, somebody else. It's not rat running. It's not other people crowded in those school gates. It's the users of the schools. So we really have got to get do a lot more work on behaviour change. I would have thought it was obviously in the current climate that you don't drive up to the school gates, but people are worried about getting on buses, people are worried about other things. So I, you know, I understand that for some parents, they just want to drive their child as close to the school as they can. We're going to have to take more stricter measures. So that work does carry on. If any particular schools ask in front of things, then certainly get in touch with us, get an email to me, and I'll make sure that's fed in. But all schools should have had a very direct contact from our highways officers. So so that's an ongoing project. It's no way over. We see that at the start of this. Hopefully, a really more fundamental behaviour change. And with the pavement parking, hopefully you've noticed that the comms team have been doing a promotion of pavement of not pavement parking, it's fine me, and on the grounds of obstruction, you know, blocking people with prams, blocking people in wheelchairs, and all those other kind of problems that that really, really antisocial, even if it's not technically illegal, but extremely antisocial pavement parking engenders. So that is ongoing at the moment. You should have seen stuff coming out. We've been tweeting and Facebooking about it, which reflects the national change that's being mooted. However, lots and lots of pavement parking as well. We already have double yellow lines. So we don't need to discuss should you park there or not. They're double yellow lines. That kind of means legally you are not allowed to park there. And I think there are some issues with out of city centre, particularly enforcement of those double yellow lines. And I know a lot of councillors have got quite frustrated about the lack of enforcement. Again, there's been issues with staff being off or whatever. But I think we really, really need to look carefully now at enforcing the law that we do have before we necessarily worry about imposing a lot more laws, because if we can't enforce what we've got now, how are we going to do the rest of it? So there's double yellow lines if they're not being enforced. I think that needs to be fed into the cabinet member. And myself, of course, I can pass that on. But we need to feed that in, because if we're not enforcing it, then people like outside the schools, they're not going to listen to us since we start backing it up with tickets and stuff.
Thank you very much, Laura. I can see there is no more questions, so I would just like to make a few comments myself. And I got quite excited reading the the report in terms of citizens' jury that is going to happen. So we definitely do need more democratic engagement on this, on this path that we are on towards zero carbon for twenty thirty. And obviously, what is really pressing is that we at the council developed our strategy and implementation plan, and that is something that is hopefully happening. As I read in October already, we will have a meeting between the stakeholders and also citizens' jury and members and so. So that's that's quite exciting. And I know there is an overlap between officers' report and your report, so maybe some questions will come there as well. I also just wanted to note here, you talk about energy generation projects. And, for example, the waterfront heat network and the Mersey tidal barrage. And I know these are bigger, longer term projects. But we I do want to note that, as you know, Robin Hood Energy folded, and we did Lecky as well, which was a white label company that the council had. So in that terms, is this not an opportunity for us to really step in and start generating our own energy? Do we have plans towards this, maybe on a smaller scale as well?
Well, as you say, the reports are designed to complement each other, so there will be some more information on those energy generation projects. The Lecky thing is a tragedy, because that was an attempt by us to kind of, you know, get some public ownership and to sort of intervene in that market there. And that's that's fallen down because of issues at the owner, the owner end of it, rather than our end, which is a shame. And that kind of points to how difficult it is for anybody else to intervene in this with the big six or whatever they are, kind of actually do more, you know, communal generation or whatever that we'd want to see. Certainly with the tidal barrage, that's a city region level project being led by the combined authority, and that's moving ahead. I know that the Metro Mayor is extremely committed to that. They see that as the future in terms of we should be self sufficient. I've forgotten the number of years. I did go to the launch of that feasibility study. It was only in February, but it seems like it feels like a lot longer ago now. So there is information that I can get from the combined authority on that, but certainly in terms of a long term city region level project, there's absolute commitment to that. But but that's not going to turn around anytime fast, as you say.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Definitely thinking about municipal generation of energy is something possibly we could be discussing in in more detail in in future here at this select committee as well. Okay, so as things stand now, so I would like to thank Laura for her report. Thank you very much, and for all the councillors who have asked questions and engaged with it. Thank you very much. And so we will be moving now on to item number four, which is actually question time. And we've had one question that was asked by councillor Sarah Jenkins Jennings, apologies, and that was circulated to you. And the question itself was about all the motions that were submitted to our task groups as to what happened to them. So we have a very detailed answers there in terms of the motions, in terms of task groups and and what happened. And so does anyone, any members have any further questions about this? Okay, councillor Clark, please. Apologies, it's just that your hand is still raised. So if you could please put it down. And councillor Tom Cron, have you got your hand raised there again, or?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I was going to ask where it was circulated. Was it in the main reports pack, or was it circulated separately?
Chair, 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 and members, for the purpose of clarity, an email circulated approximately twenty past four this evening to all members of this committee, I remember. And following this meeting, a copy of the question, the associated response, will be published to the city council's website as well.
I mean, I would suggest, because given that this this question is actually linked to the task groups, and it's linked to the report that we will receive now. And it seems to me, having been through all these committees, that what we should do is probably ask task group chairs to discuss all the motions at their next meeting as a matter of urgency, so that we can actually get some resolution there and see what they can do with the motions together with with the officers there. And I appreciate that a lot of work has already been done by our officers, working on these particular issues already, actions and activities. And we will hear about them next. So I think that, from me, would be a kind of a suggestion that the task group chairs follow this up and actually get on with the motions as quickly as they can as their at their next meeting. Thank you. So we are now going to move to item number five, and that is climate change emergency declaration, task groups and actions updates. And this is from the officers to give us an update where we are, pages thirty-one to thirty-nine on our agenda. Thank you. I think I will bring here Colleen Martin to speak to start. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the committee. Obviously, you have three of us here today, so myself, Darren Hardy, and Sam Campbell on on video link as well, who can ask, who can respond to questions. We we won't necessarily go into detail, because we'd rather receive your questions, but just to pick up a couple of things that are not in the report to to add and supplement. So Laura mentioned councillor Robertson Collins, sorry, mentioned that we have identified a consultancy to to assist us with our climate change strategy. That firm is Unomia. We have been working with them. We've had two meetings with them, and obviously councillor Robertson Collins has had has had a chat with them. As as identified in the report, we absolutely will be involving members of the select committee, as well as other members of the council in the kind of stakeholder engagement, and looking at the four particular themes that we have identified as a city council as being important in terms of taking our our climate change strategy forward. We are working with them over a number of of months, so kind of up to twelve months, and there will be various stages, and we will bring back update reports in terms of what the work is, what the what work has been done, some of the initial findings, and obviously the initial stakeholder engagement. So that is the much broader climate change strategy development. And they will also be working with focus groups of officers internally as well to look at some of those recommendations, and even the the things that we have already put forward as a council and reviewing those. So there were a list of fifty items that have been shared previously that we as the council have identified in terms of of steps to to take to improve our commitments to to that climate change, reducing our carbon emission. And what I would say is is our climate strange strategy is very much focused on achieving the the very ambitious target that we have set as a council in terms of achieving net zero carbon by twenty thirty. So that is very much what we're working on, and that will be the focal point. And we will obviously bring updates back to both Cabinet, but obviously the select committee as well. The other thing just to reference, because I know it's not in detail in the report, is is the work that Laura alluded to in terms of the ongoing work that we're doing specifically on the mandated clean air plan with the Joint Air Quality Unit. And there has been a lot of discussion in other cities who have already been through their their clean air plans. We have agreed a way forward with with the Joint Air Quality Unit in DEFRA in terms of our modelling. And that's particularly important for us, because what it does do is it allows us to review the the kind of modelling that we've had, look at where our kind of overages, if you like, in terms of emission levels in key areas can be reviewed, and ensure that the measures we are taking are absolutely fundamental. And that includes the the continued modelling of what is appropriate as a clean air zone and how that will work with the city. The other advantage, if you like, in terms of the approach that we've agreed with Jack Yu, is we will be able to take into consideration some of the basically sensitivity testing of what what has arisen with with the with the result of coronavirus and some of the changes and behaviours, and particularly the the modelling and the additional monitoring that we we will be able to put in place. So all of those factors are coming into play. And again, we will be bringing something in November in much more detail, working with with the the consultants, again, that are that are supporting that remodelling of of some of those key works in terms of the baseline refresh that we're doing to bring that forward and talk to the committee about what the what that that outcome is. What we are looking at, and committee members will be aware that we have presented previously, is just refreshing that. But again, it's about ensuring that everything that is is that we're putting in place in terms of the proposals to Jack Yu are appropriate for Liverpool, and make sure it makes sense for our our community, but our residents particularly as well, in terms of addressing the air quality concerns and and issues, but also work hand in hand with our carbon emission targets as well, because, as I've said previously at this committee, air quality and and reductions in carbon emissions do not naturally, do not necessarily always go hand in hand. So we're making sure that we're creating the synergies as much as possible with those. And that's that's embedded in all of our proposals going forward. I don't propose to to go into any more specific detail, because there is a lot of detail in the report. But before asking, before handing back to to you, Chair, I'll just ask if if Darren Hardy or Sam Campbell want to say anything further on the report or add to what's in the content of the report at the moment.
Thank you very much, Colleen, for for the report and for taking us through it. Could I ask Darren Hardy, do you, would you like to add something, please?
Chair, I think Colleen's covered most of the the content of the report, so just have to take any questions that members have.
Thank you. And Sam Campbell, would you like to add something, please?
It's okay. I'll keep my power off because my broadband is very poor at home, so I hope you can all hear me. And I, yeah, Colleen's covered most of the things, but just particularly I wouldn't mind drawing attention to the updates with regards to the local plan going forward. We're eventually reaching our hearing session, which should be mid October. And obviously, within the local plan, we have a suite of sustainability policies, of which then we hang on our further supplementary document, policy work. So critically relating to that is the rollout of the public realm strategy that I alerted to back in February, March time. We're actually drawing up proposals, and we're close to going out to consultation, or taking the report to Cabinet on consultation. And embedded within that strategy will be sustainability principles, greening of the city. It covers the whole city. And what's really exciting is that we're now looking at twenty minute walkable communities. So it's trying to design the public realm to encourage other modes of transport rather than the private car. So there's there's a lot happening. And also, within the report, you'll see about the urban greener and and other details. So there's there's quite a bit that's gone that's happened during lockdown in terms of the built natural environment. And hopefully, we'll start to get that policy base going through the local plan in order to secure those proposals coming forward through the planning application process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Samantha Campbell, for that, and also for for the retail element that is in the report. Can I please now ask members if they have any questions or comments on this report, please? Councillor Brown, please. And then we have councillor Cron. Thank you.
Just just responding to it as a chair of one of the task groups. I mean, obviously, we've had lockdown, and that's that's obviously made it hard for for us to do hardly anything. But I am very keen that that we get these task groups back up and going again, and not just being a just a a meeting to just discuss the motions that will kind of put on them, really. I said before that I really want this committee, the committee that I do on waste and and energy, to really be a committee that that uses it as a fact finding mission, I think, for the city. I think that there has been a lot that has gone on in the city during lockdown. I myself have taken up yardening in a big way. And a lot of people have have engaged in in a lot of different things that they might not have done in the past. For example, somebody set up a communal garden in my ward, and I know there's a few other examples of those around the city. And I think that actually, I would like us to kind of get to grips on these committees pretty pretty quickly. on these committees pretty quickly and start getting in and seeing the people who've been doing some really good stuff during lockdown so that we can use that as examples for the council going forward, really. And really where we go from this really is that we need to kind of put some sort of resolution that these committees are up and going within the next couple of months. I've already requested that mine meet, but I understand the logistics of it. But it doesn't seem too hard to get to a teams meeting together. So do we need to have some sort of resolution that these meetings kind of get underway? I leave it to this committee to decide, I suppose.
Well, I believe that we should restart these task groups and definitely that there is some kind of feedback coming to here for the twenty fifth of November. So in that sense, if each one of these task groups could meet before then, because this is our next meeting, so ideally we could do something with that.
Thank you Chair, just to pick up the point raised by councillor Brown. Yes, I can confirm that colleagues from Democratic Services are in direct contact with yourself as Chair and indeed the other group chairs, specifically with a view to setting up our next round of meetings and indeed future dates as well to get things moving along rapidly. So again, very valid points and we're very much on it.
So we have, thank you. Laura, did you want to come in on this point?
Thanks. Yes, I appreciate that the these task groups work to the committees. I think just to put it in the context that, you know, we're extremely under pressure in terms of the staffing resource, but that doesn't in any way stop members going off and getting on with plenty of work in terms of that finding, bringing things forward, bringing reports, as you would like a scrutiny report, you'd bring it back to the committee and then it can come back to me that way. I think I did try to emphasize in my report the reality of the situation we're in with, you know, Tory austerity, we're heading for Brexit, all the rest of the nightmare scenarios that are going on in terms of support for the council and the reality of having staff still off work, staff still unable to work in a normal way and the pressures that our staff are under. I think members have to absolutely step up here. If you're a Chair of one of these groups, you've got to take the initiative, go and do some work. I would welcome ideas coming forward, absolutely. You know, I'm happy or join meetings if you want me to join meetings. But for people to kind of sort of go on and get on with that, don't wait for, you know, our committee clerks are washed off their feet, you know, dealing with all this high tech stuff and all the rest of it and everybody complaining all the time that their tech doesn't work, which I probably do to Mike more often than most people. But, you know, members are a resource and they have to go out and take ownership of this.
Thank you Laura. And the same, I'd just like to say I would also like to be invited to any of the task group meetings, so please do copy me into this. We've had councillor Crown and then councillor Clark, I believe, yes? No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There was a hand up. Okay, councillor Crown, yes?
Thank you Chair, and I completely agree with the conversation that's just taken place about the task groups and I'll get in touch with committee clerk to get the air quality task group up and running as soon as possible. And Colleen, thank you for the report. I thought that was really encouraging. I'm really looking forward to sort of there being a structured approach to how this committee works because it is time that we really started putting something together and hopefully we can all work together very collaboratively and, you know, all agree a really good way forward for the city. I've got two specific questions. First one is you mentioned the name of the consultants that you've engaged to help with the plan. I didn't quite catch it. What was their name?
So it's Eunomia, E U N O M O N I A, sorry.
O A I A.
You know Mia, N O M I A, yeah, you know Mia.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And just, I mean, I read the report and there's lots of good stuff in there, which, you know, we'll obviously do a lot of work on over time. But one thing that caught my eye, because I'm currently in contact frequently with the officers and the contractors involved with the Festival Gardens site, which is in my ward, huge massive project, enormous opportunity for Liverpool to showcase its ambition to do things in a different way to try and, you know, showcase the best of environmental and sustainable development. And that's all detailed in the residential design guide. And there's all kinds of talk about, you know, higher standards and talks of, you know, promoting public transport use rather than car use. However, the work the council are going to do is going to be putting in lots of private car parking spaces underneath all the dwellings. There's going to be roads designed so people can drive up to their properties. I've been pushing for this to be a low car or zero car development with pedestrianized, family-friendly streets, promoting low vehicle ownership and, you know, encouraging people to use the bus links to use the train link, which is about a five-minute walk from the site. So, you know, there's this big opportunity, ten million pounds of money from the government to get this site up and running, yet we're still doing things the old way and not thinking about the future. So are we going to just have loads of great policies but carry on doing things in the same way in the future?
So I'll say that we have also indication here from Laura that she wants to respond to this as well. Okay, thank you.
Well, I was going to just say, you know, I understand what you're saying councillor Brown, but as Sam Campbell identified, we are in the midst of looking at the local plan. And obviously, a lot of the policies that we have to embed needs to be agreed through that local plan process. But I will defer to councillor Robertson Collins to respond.
Thanks Chair, thanks Tom for those questions. Just two things for me to come back on to ask. Tom raised the issue about the task groups again there. And just to clarify who the chairs of the task groups are, because obviously there's been change of membership of the groups, so of the committee, I mean. So to clarify who the chairs of the work groups are, so I know who I'm working with. But with the Festival Gardens, when I answered Tom before, I did mention you're new to this committee, but we have been meeting and I have put in extremely detailed reports to every committee. And obviously, they exist as a resource online. You can go and read those. I think it was the first time we met back in November. The Festival Gardens site was something I particularly drew attention to. And I know Chair that subsequent to that, you were trying to get a report to this committee. Because when I first reported to this committee, what I tried to do to be helpful to the committee was draw attention to several issues that the committee may want to look at. And I cannot emphasize enough that this committee spans every single service area, potentially of the council. You don't have to only listen to myself and to Colleen and Darren. There are other offices who can be called before this committee. There are other elected members who can be called before this committee. So we have to make sure we keep that expansive point in mind. I did refer to the Festival Gardens site. I completely unusually agree with councillor Crown there. He's absolutely right. This has to be an exemplar. And I've been saying that certainly since I was appointed and I've been involved with some of the issues around the public transport, improvements to public transport on that route way, improvements to active travel, improvements to the link to St Michael's Station, which we were dealing with. I think I tried to contact you Tom about the improvements through Priory Woods because obviously we don't want the woods compromised. But we do want, that's got to be a key gateway into the, to the train station for that new development in your ward. So I completely agree with you. It's got to be an exemplar. It's got to be looked at differently. The report that went to Cabinet, I think at the beginning of December, was a reasonable step towards that, that those things had been taken on board. So I think, you know, we are being listened to, but I totally agree. There's a lot more that can be done on that, particularly with the transport links and the things around parking and so on on the site.
Thank you very much both for this. May I just suggest straight that we then put Festival Gardens as one of the items on our work programme that is coming up. So might be a good idea. I am sure that we will all agree with that. Also, the fact that this is really our opportunity to showcase Liverpool as a good example and that we have very good practices in terms of sustainability and environment. And in that sense, I'd like to also ask a question, well, either Colleen or maybe Sam Campbell, in terms of our local plan that is coming up. Because that is something that hearings will be due in October. So do you feel confident that this local plan is robust example of a model practice in terms of sustainability in comparison to maybe some other local plans that exist from other councils? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'll take that question. And yes, I do, the plan was submitted in two thousand and eighteen, we need to remember. So it's taken this time to have the hearings come from October. But we are obliged as a local planning authority to write the plan in line with the National Planning Policy Framework, which sets out the sustainability agenda that we need to admit. The three pillars of sustainability that will be through that run, the golden thread that runs through the local plan. But that said, the policies are, as I said before, are just at the base of which we can build other detailed policies on. So that's the supplementary planning document work that we're working on. We can only do that supplementary planning document work if we have a relevant policy within the local plan. And that's where we can start actually updating how we deal with climate change. So for instance, the public realm strategy, we're working on the residential strategy where we can start to think about how we deal with renewables within buildings. So we are evolving. It's a constant process. And as soon as the local plan's adopted, we'll have to review it. So if it doesn't start, just because the local plan, hopefully will be adopted sometime next year, doesn't mean that we don't have the opportunity to keep testing, reviewing and implementing change. That's your question?
Yes. No, thank you. I think that's important that it is a working document and that is being changed as that it's developing. Because obviously, it was started developing before we declared climate emergency. So it's important that we are on top of it. Any other questions from members on this report? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. This was a quite extensive report. Thank you to the officers and it has provided us with good updates in terms of what's been going on in terms of our task groups and these themes. Okay, we are now moving. Here we go. Okay, yes. We are now moving on to item number six, which is Liverpool Economic Recovery Plan Summary Report, which I believe you would have read already even before this meeting. But I thought it was important to actually bring it here to this select committee so that we hear about it in terms of focus on the green issues and on the environment and sustainability. So we could have, could we please have an officer talk about this report? Is it Colleen again, please? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'll start, but obviously both Sam and Darren and other members of the committee obviously can come in, but particularly Sam and Darren and Darren particularly, as he was heavily involved in writing this. The reason for bringing the summary report to the committee and obviously just drawing the committee's attention to it is to look at it with that lens of how climate change is actually being embedded in our mainstream thinking and our mainstream working. So it's not a climate change strategy sits over here and then our other work happens. It's about climate change being embedded and our commitment to net zero carbon emissions, improving air quality, happening throughout all of our work and our mainstreaming and picking up that work. So in terms of just drawing the committee's attention to some of the the kind of factors that are alluded to in the report, but also drawing out that attention and just providing a little bit more background. So first and foremost, if we're just going to go through the key headings particularly, looking at Liverpool's vulnerability to the coronavirus and just the health inequalities that are emerging. The wider active travel strategy is absolutely a fundamental part of this because it's about the physical activity. It's about people using our green spaces and using our environment and our environment being a place that people want to go out and celebrate and be with their families in. We've seen that over the period of time around park usage. We've seen that with an increased cycling, increased walking, reductions in car usage over that period, people working in an agile way comparatively. And so just in terms of some of the contributing factors, if you like, in terms of health inequalities and where some of the concerns are coming from particularly. And as more information has even evolved with the coronavirus, the active travel strategy is not just dealing with people using alternative forms of transport, but actually it's about contributing to those bigger and broader outcomes of health inequalities. So just drawing the committee's attention to how the two elements dovetail together to work together to achieve multiple outcomes. The second factor that we just wanted to highlight for you is particularly around the housing renewal programme. And that, yes, it's about job creation and it is about improving our housing quality, which again will contribute to the health inequalities and contributing to improving the conditions in which people and our residents are living. But a fundamental core element of that housing renewal programme is also down to the demographic of our housing profile and the fact that we have older stock that can be refurbished effectively and actually reduce the amount of carbon emission comparatively to other cities from that older stock. So it is about refurbishing the stock that we can, building new where it's appropriate, but actually refurbishing some of our households so that we don't get that high level of carbon emission. We have on average about ten percent more emissions from our house type, from our house profile compared to, say, a similar city of size like Bristol. And that is down to our demographic profile. So in terms of the work that we are talking about of refurbishing existing terraced properties or wide swathes of programmes, it is about improving that housing quality, the energy efficiency of those homes as well. So addressing not just fuel poverty, but the amount of energy that's being used in the first place. And it does link again in that regeneration of key areas. We talked about paddocks in the previous report about how we implement heat and energy generation in local communities, how we are taking advantage of our waterfront as well and looking at that feasibility for waterfront heat networks, et cetera. So that is absolutely core within that housing renewal programme, but also that regeneration, physical regeneration programme as well. The other final point that we just wanted to highlight again for the committee to draw attention to, but also to give more background and I'll probably ask Darren to come in a little bit on this is around employment, but also business support. You will have seen in the previous reports the fact that when we've issued business grants, we've also given companies, any recipients of our business grants, sorry, the advice of how to actually improve their own sustainability, improving their carbon emissions as part of that grant giving programme and the expectations of what we've asked our smaller enterprises particularly to look at as well as the larger enterprises. We are looking at going forward how we support businesses to make those fundamental shifts and changes in terms of how their business operations work and are creating a much more sustainable way of working. And again, acting as a leader ourselves as Liverpool City Council and changing the way we work, but also leading and as a community leader to encourage businesses to reduce their own carbon emissions as part of the city plan goal. And the economic renewal and recovery and renewal document absolutely supports the overarching city plan ambitions that we've got as well in terms of that climate change and that net zero carbon target. The final thing is in terms of that job, business type creation, but also job creation. So again, it's looking at newer industries. Yes, we've talked very specifically about the creative and visitor economy because we know that that's a very fundamental part of Liverpool's economy. But alongside that, it's also about a healthier and sustainable economy in terms of the types of businesses. So we are looking at businesses who can be those technological innovators and the scientific innovators in the science park again that we're working. The sci-entech development is a key fundamental part of that. The knowledge creation and the knowledge jobs, the jobs creation that's coming as part of that in terms of the skill sets that we're looking at employees to have going forward, the types of jobs and if you like, so-called green industries. But basically having those fundamental skill sets. And this is where I'll probably hand over to Darren because I know Darren's been heavily involved in that work alongside the other growth directors in the Liverpool city region. So Darren, did you want to just talk a little bit more about the employment support and certainly the business support that we've done?
Yeah, thank you Chair. It may be worthwhile just reflecting what this document is and maybe what it isn't. We were the first city, we're the first local authority in fact, to put a document on government's table to say, this is what our immediate response to Covid economically is. I was sat in this chair in this chamber a few weeks ago around Employment Skills Select Committee. And we're talking about the potential economic impact of Covid. And there's potentially ninety to hundred thousand people in this city who will have their income affected in some way by the Covid crisis. And that might be about the loss of hours. It might be about changing working conditions. And that might be about the loss of hours, it might be about changing working conditions, it could be about long-term unemployment. So we felt it was massively important to be saying to government, early doors, this is actually the sorts of things that we can do immediately to respond to that crisis. This is not a long-term economic plan. It's very much about our short term, the next 12, 18 months, two years, the things we can do to create jobs and actually to get people back into employment, to secure their employment. And I think members need to read the document in that context. I think it's also fair to say, and I think we referred to this in the previous report, whilst we put this on government's table and they've acknowledged it, they've not come back with a formal response at this point in time. So we don't know how much of this as a programme actually will ever be delivered with government funding, although these all remain our priority areas of action. I think members will be aware of the fact there's a comprehensive spending review taking place at present, which we expect to report probably sometime in October because consultation doesn't finish till the end of this month. Probably not until after that comprehensive spending review that we'll understand what government's intentions are in terms of long-term economic growth. I think Colleen's covered a lot of the bigger points on this. And I think when you read the document and get behind the document, you can see that there's an awful lot of green thinking behind these projects. And whether that is about, you know, district heating power networks, where despite the fact that part of our aspiration in this document is to build upwards and to create residential developments at scale in and around the city centre, which then protects our land supply elsewhere in the city and is key to being our housing targets. Whether it's about the retrofit aspirations that are in here, probably worthwhile pausing for a second and saying that we were the first people post-Covid to talk to government about retrofit. And although we didn't get the £30,000 a unit that we wanted, government have responded in terms of their green homes programme. It's not perfect. I think there's issues there in terms of how they're delivering that programme. There's issues there about the amount of resource available for a household, but it's a step in the right direction. We need to keep pushing at that. And I like to think that some of the things that we said in this document have helped shape government's thinking around that response. I'm going to bore members now and I apologise. But if you build a new house, it creates about 19 temporary employment opportunities. If you refurbish an existing property, not only do you get the benefit of the refurbishment, but you create 30 employment opportunities for the same value of money. So it actually acts as a much greater creator of jobs. And we think putting that on government's radar made them think much more about what are the opportunities in terms of refurbishment. Equally, one of the things that we flagged in here, and we did this alongside the combined authority, was to talk about recreating what was the Future Jobs Fund, if people remember that, which was a response to the last economic crisis that gave young people an opportunity to have six months' real work, with real work experience with a wage. And government's Kickstart scheme does exactly that. Again, it's not perfect, but I think we would have wanted a five-day wage rather than the three and a half or four-day wage that's been offered. It's our intention to bid to be part of that scheme, to try and deliver some jobs locally through that process. The bidding doesn't end and we'll put our submission until the end of this month. We expect to hear back from government in October. I think one of the challenges will be that whereas we would have hoped and expected that government would have devolved that funding and put that funding through local authorities, so we could have focused it into the areas where we see genuine economic growth, so the green industries for example. Government intend to open that up to a whole market approach. So there could be 30 or 40 different people delivering Kickstart within the city region, which will create, I think, a lot of confusion for businesses. But we're trying to corral all of those organisations into at least trying to work together more cooperatively so that we're focusing on the right businesses and the right industries. In terms of business support, Colleen's right. And one of the things that we insisted on in terms of our discretionary grants that we gave to businesses, I think we still haven't finished giving all those grants out at this point in time, but we'll do in the next two weeks. So far, 984 businesses have received discretionary grants from us. And for each one of those businesses, what we said was if you take this grant, you are signing up to reviewing your environmental policies within that business. We don't know how many of those businesses will survive the recession. But the ones that do are then contractually committed to reviewing those policies and coming back to us with the outcome of that review. And that gives us then a hook into those businesses to say, well, actually, do you not realise that if you do this better or this differently, then that could save you money, that could make your business more efficient? And there are lots of business people who are out there, I think, have got the same commitment to this agenda that we all have. But there's business people out there who haven't and just see the bottom line. And I think the compelling argument is, if actually green business practices can save you money, why wouldn't you want to do them? And we'll drive that with those businesses who receive grant through this process. At the same time, we've been talking to the combined authority about potentially putting in some cash into a green business advice scheme. And we're working with Liverpool Chamber of Commerce and the universities on developing that. The combined authority are currently reviewing what cash that they've got available because obviously a lot of their money has had to be recycled over the past few months to help support businesses who have been in quite dire straits. And they're waiting for the confirmation of their next set of cash from government. Once they know that, then I think we can look to work with them much more closely on that additional support. And I'll shut up there, Chair, because I'm conscious I'm probably boring people, so.
Thank you very much, Darren and Colleen of course, but also Darren for giving us a bit of a context actually and explaining this economic recovery plan. And it's really good to see that businesses will be putting environment on the agenda and actually saving money through that. And just generally that in the city plan, tackling climate crisis is one of the six priorities that we have. So that is really heartwarming. So thank you very much both for this. And does Samantha want to add anything or do we have any questions or possibly Laura? Okay, so we have from councillor Brown a question. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I don't want to go into too much detail on this because I think I actually have quite a few questions in relation to it. But actually, in relevance to this committee, it might not be relevant to kind of go into them today because it's not just all about the green issues as officers have said. I wonder whether this will come to full council for all members to have a little bit of a conversation about. I know it's gone through cabinet, obviously we've already submitted it, but the government at some point will respond, hopefully. And I was going to say A, B and C look good, but you know, have you considered doing such and such? Are we going to see this come to council so all members can respond on wider issues rather than just the green issues which we might do today? But if not, can we maybe make a decision that it can go to council? Because it seems a document that I think that is relevant for the entire council and for all members to make points to.
Thank you, councillor Brown. In terms of the state of the document for you, this has actually already been approved by the city council's cabinet at a prior meeting and has also already been shared with all members as well. And as you'll have seen, it's been discussed other select committees as well, as Darren alluded to in terms of employment and skills. Obviously, with any document such as this, it's an iterative process and obviously has different communications to receive back from central government departments and responses and indeed updates on my various initiatives outlined. There'll be further opportunities for updates to the various select committees at different stages moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. So can I move that a report be noted and further updates on the economic recovery? And obviously the big question, will we receive this funding and when? In the context, on environmental and climate change initiatives to be reported to this committee on a regular basis. Is that agreed? We still have Darren, are there?
Sorry, Chair. I think my chief exec would be incredibly displeased if I didn't make the point that whether we get funding from government for this or not, these are our priority projects and we will attempt to deliver these because they are key to the future of the city. And we need to generate those employment opportunities with or without government support.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Darren, for that. So can we just agree that this has been received, yes? And updates will be given. Thank you. We are moving on to item number seven, yes, seven. And that is the work programme that we have. You should have it on page six. So as you may be aware, we have a shorted truncated schedule of dates due to Covid-19. So we have this meeting and then we have two more meetings. This is not just the case with this select committee, but with all select committees. So our next meeting is the 25th of November. And I believe we have already agreed that on that meeting we will have task groups updates. So that's something that is on the agenda then. Do we have, we also, I believe, want to have a discussion on festival gardens. So that should be at one of these meetings either in November or in March. If there are any other items that you would like to add to this programme, if you could please email me and Mike Jones, that would be much appreciated. Okay? Do members have any questions for or comments on this draft work programme right now? I mean, there's an opportunity to email as well. Okay, no, thank you. So we will move now on to motions. And we have three motions to consider. So we are going to, I'm just checking the time, we are doing quite well. So we can have around 10 minutes for each motion. So the first motion that we have is actually a motion that I am submitting. I'm proposing this motion. And it's on reaching the Liverpool City Council net zero carbon target without relying on carbon offsetting. It's been quite a while since I wrote it, so I will need to remind myself of it. But basically, it is about what, what happens is that in order to reach a zero carbon, sometimes councils rely on carbon offsetting. So in a way, it's a kind of a system where they don't actually are reaching their target, but they are selling some of the carbon units to companies. And it can happen that these companies are abroad. And then what they do, they let, for example, plant forests in Amazon or anywhere else. Well, this is very good practice, of course. What we shouldn't be doing is just moving our problem here that we have within our authority to somewhere else. So in a way, it is not against carbon offsetting, which is very important. And we have a lot of work already with tree planting, as Laura has mentioned in her report already, here in Merseyside. But it's actually against this idea that we can just be moving our carbon budget somewhere else and in that way, reaching our own zero carbon. So and that is something that did happen with Liverpool City Council before. And we came across this at the regeneration committee where some foundations received a certain amount of money, which then was actually for this carbon offsetting. So we did a bit of research into that and then wrote up this motion about actually not relying on this carbon offsetting and selling our carbon units elsewhere. Okay, so do we have any questions or amendments on this? Laura, please.
Thanks, Lena. Obviously, I'm not a member of the committee, but I want to really thank you for bringing this motion. As you say, it seems quite a while ago now that we have discussed it privately in the past. I think we were both quite shocked when we saw, as you say, something that came to Regen or was a delegated decision, or we stumbled across finding out about this money that had gone on to this particular programme. And to reiterate, I did put it in my written report as well. But thank you for bringing the motion. I completely support it as a cabinet member. I couldn't be more supportive of it. And as I say, I do appreciate you bringing it. And any decision to do that predated me being a cabinet member and the current cabinet member for regeneration. So it was a decision made a while ago. And I think it's the right thing to kind of draw attention to the fact that any offsetting, we want a local response, we want to be able to see a local benefit from it. And this does seem a bit like just shifting our responsibilities. So thank you for bringing it.
Thank you very much. Just to say, also in the motion, it also says that where there are no viable alternatives in the short term, the offset scheme promises to cancel out the emissions in one place with emission reducing action in another. But however, if such measures do become necessary, it is important to consider what exactly is being invested in. So that can be, say, renewables and that we kind of look at our own area as if our own backyard where we are and how we can offset the carbon in this area. So it's not completely saying no, but it's actually kind of looking at the practices of how we do it. Okay, so we have, I can see there's a hand raised there. It's from councillor Knight, yes? Councillor Crone, okay. Swapped cameras. Okay, councillor Crone, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to raise the fact that the council have been spending money on carbon offsetting already, something that I think we discussed at regeneration some time ago. So hopefully, as a result of this motion, that will be looked at again and we will stop spending council taxpayers' money on offsetting. I just had a question. I wonder if we could get some research done. The council have a reduction in recent years already. And I wonder if they are including any of the supposed reductions achieved by offsetting in that? And if so, we should have that scratched from the claim and they should adjust the council's carbon reductions accordingly?
Well, the idea is that with this motion, it wouldn't be counted in, that we reach the zero carbon target without this carbon offsetting. So I mean, that's the idea. Since we will have our action plan, implementation and strategy how to reach zero carbon, we will take this into consideration. So since I'm proposing the motion, can I have a second for this motion, please? We don't, we don't require one? I'm just taking that this is then agreed? Okay, so this is agreed, yes? No objections? No, okay.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are going to pass on to a motion, which is the second motion. Sorry, I'm just getting a bit lost here. Oh, yes, it's the motion on air quality that is set by councillor Alan Tormey. But we will have councillor Brown to speak on it, please.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, councillor Tormey can't join us this evening. The motion is there, as you can see. Obviously, lockdown has been one of those situations where I think everybody has seen the benefits and of improvements to air quality and cars not being on roads and stuff like that and the earlier parts of it. And I think that, you know, we need to take this opportunity to really capitalise on what we've learnt. We've already talked a bit in the cabinet member response, a bit about the cars outside schools and things like that. This motion mainly focuses on idling. And just to say, very happy to accept the amendment by whoever's moving it. I don't know if we have to have a formal process of somebody moving it and we all vote on it or whatever. But I've spoken with Alan and myself, we're perfectly happy to accept the amendment. I think a report would be useful. It is worth noting that the motion praises the work that Merton have done. Merton being a part, I think, of 31 London boroughs that have already signed up to an action on idling and have made some quite good impact with that. I think with over 2,000 cars that have been stopped, particularly outside schools, from keeping their engines on. So happy to accept the amendment by whoever's moving it. But if we have to do a formal process, then that's what we need to do.
Okay, thank you. So Mike, do we have to do the formal process or do we just vote on the substantive motion with the amendment? The amendment is actually to bring this, to find out what work has already been done on idling in Liverpool City Council and to bring the report to this committee. So that's the amendment.
Thank you, Chair. As the amendment is Thank you Chair. As the amendment has in fact been accepted by councillor Brown prior to it being moved, it seems sensible to consider that as a substantive motion at this point. And obviously, if all the members of this committee at this stage have any further comments, then obviously now's the opportunity to please indicate, otherwise with the Chair's agreement, we can then move to the vote.
Thank you. Just before we move to the vote, I would just like to say, because I'm also Anfield Ward councillor, I represent Anfield Ward and we have massive issues really with idling coaches when we have matches or when we have events. So this is a massive issue. Of course, for schools, it's big, but it's also for all the other events, like we are a city that have two football teams that are in premiership. So therefore, we have these massive issues with traffic and with congestion and then of course with idling coaches. So it's a big issue. So I'd just like to note that, that that's also an issue. And now if you could please ask, are there any, Laura, you would like to say something as well?
I was only going to add to, I mean, I totally sympathise and agree with the sympathy of the motion, with the trajectory of the motion. Totally agree with the amendment that I've, in a previous life as Chair of Neighbourhoods, I remember discussing this, you know, it's a thing that's come up quite repeatedly. So I know other reports and that have looked at it. And of course, it does cut across several of the other works we're doing on air quality anyway. So it's to make sure it kind of adds to that rather than detracting or starting off on another sort of, you know, action, another action that's separate from those. With regard to outside schools, I think I would, I would want to see something much stronger than, you know, personally, I think we should be closing streets outside schools. So I think this would be a very minimum of what we're looking at. But certainly, I agree with the sympathy of it, but I just wanted to be careful that we weren't going off on another track of work. So definitely to look at what has gone on and where we're up to and how it can be integrated.
Thank you very much Laura for that. So there are no objections I take or abstentions? No, thank you. So that's passed as well. Agreed, thank you. And now we are moving on to our last motion for today. And that is the one very relevant one with ecological crisis. And again, it is by councillor Alan Tormey and councillor Brown is going to speak to it.
Again, very briefly Chair, I think this motion cuts to the heart of why we're here as a committee. And again, happy to accept the amendment. The motion's there in great detail. Not going to go into any more detail.
Thank you councillor Brown. Well, the amendment is actually to commend the work that's already been done on biodiversity here by the leadership here at the council and then to kind of, to ask the mayor and the cabinet to consider ecological declaration of ecological crisis as well. And of course, as you would have read in the motion, this is a really massive issue now with ecology with sixty, the new report says the sixty-eight percent of animals, of wildlife is declining. So these are just horrific numbers since nineteen seventy-six to two thousand and sixteen. So this is the newest report that has just come out in two thousand and twenty. And of course, we have the wildfires that are happening in California and Oregon. So the world is changing in front of our eyes and it is truly an ecological crisis. Does anyone have any comments or questions or shall we just move this? I don't think there's objections. Okay, we have Laura again, thank you.
Thanks Chair. Just to say again, completely sympathised with the trajectory of the motion and again, slight concerns that we don't set off on another batch of work that's separate from actually a lot of work that's been ongoing. So thank you for the amendment. I think making sure we integrate that. Just going back to my report, I know one of the members of the committee says it's just tinkering around the edges, but it is about actually doing things as local councils and doing things in the city. So whether you're going out to plant a wildflower meadow, whether you're letting us know which verge you don't want cut because you want that to be left to grow, whether you're signing up as a hedgehog champion, whether you're getting your residents to join in with all those things. You know, we all have a role here as leaders in every single council and every single ward and we all are influencers in that sphere and we have to use that influence the best we can, use our local ward funds to deliver what we can locally. It's no good just keep saying, well, you know, can the mayor do this? Can the mayor do that? Obviously, the mayor is an extremely busy man and I'm sure he would sympathise, but the reality is, there are ninety elected councillors. All of us have a Mayor of Neighbourhood Fund, all of us are influencers, all of us put leaflets out, we've all got to get these messages out and we've all got to be doing what we can in our wards, whether it's tinkering around the edges or whether it's actually delivering in the wards, we all need to go and do that.
Thank you very much Laura for that. So I take that we can now take the vote on the substantive motion and that there are no objections. So that is passed. Yes, agreed? Thank you. Okay, so thank you very much. This concludes our proceedings of today's select committee. I think we have done this in record time of one hour and thirty-six minutes. And we now have our next meeting, this is item number eleven, which is on Wednesday twenty-fifth of November. And that is going to be, well, we never know, but it's going to be a hybrid virtual meeting most likely. Thank you very much and thank you very much Laura for your report and to our officers as well for their extensive report as well. Thank you and bye-bye.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair.
This is today's proceedings and thank you everyone present in the chamber, present remotely and to public viewing this evening's live stream. Thank you.